The meeting of the Shreveport City Council has not been called to order. We have an invocation by Councilman Flur and Councilman Butcher will lead us with the pledge.
Let us pray, Almighty God, we come today with, fill hearts with joy, and we pray, God, thanking you for the grace that you have given us, the unmerited favor of God. We pray now, Lord, for this city and for the employees. We pray for all the men and women of the United States Postal Service. We pray, God, for safety. We pray for peace. Lord, help us to see the violence stop. We pray now for the business of this council. Give us wisdom and knowledge. Grant to us, oh God, your favor in this great city we pray today. Amen.
Please place the flag and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman McFlurry.
Present.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Flur.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Bowman. Here. Today, a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference on the 10th and a meeting on the 11th, been moved by Councilman.
Second.
Green and second by Councilman Butcher. Please vote.
Does any council member have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guests at this time?
Yes, I have the Honorable Mr. Sam Jenkins here with us today, and he's going to come up and.
Sam Gillum?
Sam Gillum, I'm sorry.
Where is Sam Jenkins? I don't see him.
I said Sam Gillum, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Come on up, Sam. He's going to give us an update on the great university, Southern University. Sam, I was so excited about you coming that, come on up, the one and only Mr. Sam Gillum. All right.
Thank you very much.
Sam, you know I know your name.
By all means, that happens a lot, by the way. The Honorable President, Mr. Bowman, other distinguished councilmen, Mayor Perkins, friends. It is indeed a distinct honor for me to stand before you today, to just be before you. I bring you greetings, obviously, from our Chairman, DeMorn Rutledge, of the Southern University Board of Supervisors. I also bring you greetings from our very own President, Dr. Ray Belton. It is a pleasure to be before you. They have indicated that I would bring you those greetings, and I have thus done so. I was testifying at a confirmation hearing before a Senate Committee last week of May. So, one of the senators made the observation that the glare off of my head was blinding everybody. So, Mr. Mayor, if you have someone who maybe dust this off if it's causing a problem for you, but we don't have that problem.
No, we don't.
We're used to it. Indeed, would I be allowed to say a few words regarding Southern University in general?
Yes, sir.
As you know, Southern University has, Shreveport has been in this community for fifty-two, going on fifty-three years. It started basically in nineteen sixty-seven. I wasn't there the very first day, but I got there a couple of days after it started. That small campus, of course, has been characterized by just simply daring to project and pursue the impossible, or daring to dream the impossible. Specifically, I'll call it two or three things because I think your time limits are here on comments. I try to stay within those, Mr. Chairman. Of course, the first thing, of course, we had was a downtown Shreveport campus here, the Metro Center as it's now called. And of course, we dared to dream the impossible because everyone said it just couldn't be done, a small HBCU, to get a footprint in downtown Shreveport. But we did it in nineteen eighty-five at the behalf of then-Chancellor Smith. And we were sitting, of course, we had skeptics sitting, of course, at the end of the conference table like you always do, saying it couldn't be done. So, we came up and said, one day, said, Sam, what shall we call it? And I came up with this very erudite term. I said, let's call it the Metro Center. And that has survived since eighty-seven. By the same token, we've also dared through our brief history, fifty-three years, to dream further in that whoever heard of a small campus like ours developing what's called an aerospace center, or an airframe power plant class right here in Shreveport. Again, the cynic said, it just couldn't be done, Mr. Flur. Said it wouldn't happen here in Shreveport. But guess what? We dared to dream the impossible and made it possible. Someone said, well, why would you even want to do it? Said, well, it's unnatural. We're sitting across town from Barksdale, you've got all of these gentlemen and ladies sitting over there with maintenance experience, making these B-52s and these A-130, 5Cs fly all over the world in the country. So, we had a built-in faculty. Daring to dream again, someone said, well, what are we going to give them to train on? Here goes, hold on to your pews. Someone said, well, let's just ask an airline to give us a plane. We called FedEx in Nashville and said, look, we are looking for an airplane for our students to train on. And guess what? The people at FedEx decided to give us a DC-10. And again, when I think about it now, I get kind of flushed watching that big DC-10 flow in or fly in from the northwest, land come up so that our students could work on it. The idea is, of course, we are proud of the support that you have given to us for it because without your support, we would not have been able to do those kinds of things. By the same token, it was nineteen eighty-five or thereabouts, we came up with the idea that Southern University in Shreveport should develop what was called a monopoly. And again, we sat around, we had the skeptics. What should we do? The idea was that, look, we decided we were going to project ourselves as the supreme and the premier allied health provider in northwest Louisiana. So, what did we come up with? Again, the skeptics, how can it be? We came up with the idea now, and if you have gone to a physician lately and you have had an x-ray, radiologic technology, if you have had your records read, medical records technology, if you had some laboratory of blood work done, laboratory technician, we forged the center on these, and these are now our students. Lastly, as I close, there's been a lot of talk lately, of course, about bringing a law center to Shreveport. And I'd like to just give you a brief idea of where we are on that. The gentleman who is the Chairman of our, excuse me, Chancellor of the Law Center in Baton Rouge, his name is John Pierre. John Pierre came up with the idea in two thousand thirteen. We both were at the time interim chancellors. John was the interim chancellor of the Law Center. I was the interim chancellor here at Southern University in Shreveport. Said, Sam, why don't we think about bringing a law center to Shreveport? There is not a law center north of Iton. And believe me, John Pierre is one of the most beautiful minds and one of the most brilliant people I know. I was fortunate, my wife and I had to have dinner with John Pierre in New Orleans last Thursday night. And guess what? We approved last Friday in New Orleans an MOU with carrying part of our law center, get this, all the way to Alabama for the Choctaw Indian Tribe. They want us to come, it's been approved. We also bid an MOU to carry part of our law center to the Kushto Native American Tribe in Kendall, Louisiana. The question I pose is, why not Shreveport? And with your help, we'll be able to do that. Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes.
Thank you, Sam. I really appreciate it. And if anyone have any questions, feel free.
Right, Councilman Butcher.
Thank you for, thank you for coming and addressing, Mr. Gillum. What, what kind of timeframe, what, what do you need from the council to, to push this forward? I think that the thought of a law school here to be a companion with our medical school is great for economic development in Shreveport, and I'm glad to see Southern University stepping up to, to do this. What, what, what can the council do to help push this along?
Well, basically, just lend us the support that, that you have already done. I believe the commission has already projected itself with a hundred thousand dollars to do a feasibility study for it. We have carried it, of course, one of the local representatives has carried it to the, to the legislature, and it's now on its way to the Board of Regents for a feasibility study. The way I can answer you is, believe me, if you know John Pierre, this friend of mine who is the Chancellor of the Law Center, he already has a plan for making this reality. He's just that kind of person. But the kind of support, sir, that you have given it previously, if that were to continue into the future, we know we can make this happen.
I think it's very important for the city of Shreveport, and I'm a hundred percent behind it. I think most council members would be. So, I appreciate you addressing us and kind of bringing us up to date on it. Thank you.
It is indeed my pleasure.
All right, Vice Chair Nicholson.
Mr. Gillum, thank you for your remarks. Like Councilman Butcher, I fully support the idea of a law school in Shreveport with Southern University, and I stand ready to assist in any way I can.
I would so advise my board, they would be happy, I assure you.
You know why I stand, so.
Councilman Green.
And as I said, when you were telling me about all of the exciting things happening at Southern University, I just wanted you to come and share it with the citizens, the city of Shreveport. Again, thank you for being you and being a loyal and just a great friend.
Well, we appreciate your inviting us, and of course, as always, we appreciate your friendship. Mr. Bowman, as you know, we go way back, our families go back. Thank you so much for allowing me to privilege, and the rest of you too, as I look around. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have one up.
Councilman Green.
I have visiting with us today, one of my parishioners, Malik Wilson, who is also in the mayor's summer program. Malik, would you just stand up and wave? He's a top-of-the-line student and a great athlete and just a great member, and one of the best ursas you could ever, Councilman Flur, he's one of the best ursas you could ever dream of.
Good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Uh, Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, we have in our agenda a resolution honoring Chief Patricia Dias, and I'd like her to come forward at this time.
Chief, five, chief whip.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bradford.
I was called for a point of order. If, if, if the gentleman is wishing to recognize and adopt this resolution, let's suspend the rules and bring this forward.
Yes.
Yes, I was going to welcome Chief Dias, but if that is your motion, I will second him. We can, we can have that moved now.
It will be.
Okay. But, Chief, uh.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chair, let's move to suspend the rules and then address Mr. Dias and then adopt the resolution.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Vice Chair Nicholson to suspend the rule.
Chief, welcome. We received all members of the county, several weeks ago, of your retirement after thirty-seven years and nine months of service to the citizens of Shreveport as a member of the Shreveport Fire Department. I wanted to make sure that you were publicly honored for your leadership in the department and for being a role model for young people, for women and for African-Americans, and for everything that you have done over the course of a long career for this city. So, on behalf of the city council, thank you so much for your service. Thank you for who you are and what you do, and I hope you enjoy a well-earned retirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we adopt the resolution, would a clerk kindly read the resolution for us? Are you prepared, Mr. Clerk?
The clerk is prepared.
This is a resolution to thank Chief Patricia Dias for thirty-seven years and nine months of service to the citizens of Shreveport. As a member of the Shreveport Fire Department, for her leadership in the department and for being the role model for young people, especially women and African-Americans, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto by Councilman John Nicholson. Whereas Chief Patricia Dias is retiring from the Shreveport Fire Department after thirty-seven years and nine months of service. And whereas before joining the fire department, Chief Dias prepared for service and leadership in her chosen profession in the following ways. Number one, she graduated from C.E. Byrd High School in nineteen seventy-one in Southern University Baton Rouge with honors in nineteen seventy-six. And number two, she served her country as a member of the United States Marine Corps before being honorably discharged in nineteen eighty. And whereas after returning to Shreveport, Chief Dias joined the fire department, and after graduating from the fire academy, served on the fire line for five years. And whereas on November the first, nineteen eighty-six, Chief Dias became a fire inspector with the rank of captain, making her the first female firefighter to achieve the rank of captain in the fire prevention service. And in nineteen eighty-eight, Ebony Magazine recognized Chief Dias and other women from around the nation for breaking through glass ceilings in the fire service. And whereas on October the first, nineteen ninety-nine, Chief Dias became the first female Assistant Chief of Fire Prevention. And on August the second, twenty eleven, she became the Chief of Fire Prevention, making her the first female to head up the Fire Prevention Division, and the first black female to head up a division of the Shreveport Fire Department. And whereas Chief Dias continued to pursue formal educational opportunities and training throughout her career, she earned degrees and certifications from several institutions, including a master's degree from Central Michigan University. And whereas Chief Dias is a native of Shreveport, who spent her formative years in the Stoner Hill community, she has been and continues to be a role model for young people in the inner city and throughout the greater Shreveport community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport in due regular and legal session convened, that the Shreveport City Council thanks Chief Patricia Dias for thirty-seven years and nine months of service to the citizens of Shreveport, as a member of the Shreveport Fire Department, for the leadership and change she brought to the department, and for the example she set for others. Be it further resolved that the Shreveport City Council congratulates Chief Patricia Dias for her many accomplishments and promotions during her service as a member of the Shreveport Fire Department. Be it further resolved that the Shreveport City Council wishes Chief Patricia Dias a happy, fulfilling, and well-deserved retirement. And the resolution has been signed by each council member.
So moved. Second, with commendations.
No, no, Chief, don't leave. Tell her don't leave, she needs to say something.
I'm so excited. All I can say is, God is good. And, and I got out to the United States Marine Corps. My goal was to work at the VA Hospital where I had my degree in recreational therapy. Went to Tuxtega, Alabama, got all my certifications, and came back, and I was in a waiting stage. Fire department was just a test that I was going to take. It was going to be a temporarily thing until my job came open. But God saw fit to, I didn't want to join the fire department, y'all. I was ready to go on vacation. But God put it in my heart, sent me to the fire department, and, Chief, I didn't even know what I made. I just said I'm going to get a little temporary job. And once I got on the job, I fell in love with the citizen and what I was doing. I fell in love with helping people. I didn't know anything about the fire department. I was living in a rough neighborhood, Stoner Hill. Only time we saw the fire department, when somebody got shot, stabbed, beat, or raped, a house was on fire. So, I knew nobody on the fire department, had no goals to join the fire department. But once I got there, and I started helping people and doing that service thing, and I fell in love with helping people. You know, you go in a house and people give you their children, or you go in a neighborhood and somebody you know been stabbed or shot, and I was there to help them, it was a true blessing. So, God, and I tell everybody, God has a purpose for everybody. He has a purpose for you. But it ain't going to be easy. His purpose for you may not be easy, but if you stick to it, you'll be the happiest person in the world. And I went through a lot of stuff, being one of the first three women's on the job. And, but God purpose stuck with me. And my son used to tell me, Mom, why you taking this stuff? You got these degrees, you got a real estate license, you got your designer's license, just leave the fire department. Yeah. But when I start working on my people, seeing my people, and saw how somebody would just grab my hand and just hold my hand because they was close to death, and I could do something to help them to get past that spot, that was for me. That was for me. So, thirty-seven years, nine months later, I'm retired, but I have thoroughly enjoyed working for the city of Shreveport, serving my people.
I want to say thank you, Councilman Nicholson, for initiating the resolution and recognition, and the other council members. Well deserved. Hired by Chief Dallas Green just under thirty-eight years ago. And Chief Dias has been a pioneer of women in the fire service, especially Shreveport Fire Department. Fire Department. I know she rose to the ranks of command staff, and in that she had the leadership and influence of recruiting and encouraging many women to come and work for the Shreveport Fire Department.
And men.
And men. But we're focusing on you right now. But... And I know she'll continue that effort. And I want you to know, on behalf of the men and women of the Shreveport Fire Department, we thank you for your service, and we also wish you the absolute best in this new chapter that God has opened called retirement. It's well deserved, and you enjoy it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Green?
Yep.
Chief.
Chief Dias, can you stick around for one?
Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
You go ahead, Councilman, I'll jump in.
Chief, I'd just like to congratulate you, and also, you've done a great job, and I'm really thankful that I've served as your pastor for a short time, and that was always great. So just keep on doing what you do, and God bless you.
And look, he was one of those that got up there and made you shout.
That's right. Had Afro... Tell him I had hair.
Yeah. He had hair.
Yeah.
Mayor Perkins?
Yeah. So Chief Dias, as I just told you, your nephew, Albert Foolwood, is a childhood friend of mine, and he reached out to me a couple of weeks ago to invite me to your retirement party, and I hate that I couldn't make it. But I can say, hearing your story today, even as much as he was bragging about you, you still are even more impressive in person. So super happy and honored to be here today. One of my mom's favorite sayings is this, she says, "If you want to tell God a joke, just tell him what you have planned." And I think your story is like the epitome of it. So thank you for being a bridge builder, thank you for being a trailblazer, not just for women or for African-Americans, but your story resonates with all of Shreveport. It's a story of selflessness and dedication to the city of Shreveport, and I'm just super grateful for the service you've given us and to even being your presence today. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Bless you, y'all. Retirement is great, y'all.
Any other council member have?
Mayor Perkins, you have any distinguished guests or words at this time?
I do. We have a distinguished guest from the governor's office, Mr. Roger Scott. Can you stand, please? Mr. Roger Scott does intergovernmental affairs for Governor John Bill Edwards, so we are grateful to have him here with us today. Thank you for being here. Another note, our police department already works closely with local law enforcement agencies from the state and federal level to ensure public safety in our city. However, in light of unfortunate death of a local letter carrier this weekend, I have asked local, state, and federal law enforcement to join me in a meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM to discuss the additional efforts we can take to combat illegal firearms and the illegal possession of firearms to curb senseless acts of violence in our community. Council members, I want to invite each and every one of you to attend. The meeting will be held in my conference room on the second floor tomorrow morning. Next, over the past two weeks, we've held general obligation bond citizen subcommittee meetings. The subcommittees are considering all areas eligible for capital improvements within the city. This includes public safety facilities, public buildings and facilities, streets and drainage, water, and special projects. We have two more meetings scheduled for Thursday and Friday of this week from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM on the second floor in the large conference room, and all are invited to attend. They want to be educated about their process as well. And those are my announcements, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Eight AM. Mr. Green, property standards, anyone have anything relative to property standards for Mr. Green?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nick.
Mr. Green, as you approach Common Street from the south, there are weed stalks as high as my head just before a bridge, and I don't know if that's... I don't know if that's in your bailiwick or not, but if somebody could have that grass cut, I think that would be great.
Approaching Common from the south?
Yeah, approaching downtown from the south on Common.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Green, for your service. Okay. Is Mr. Clark here? Master Plan Report.
Mayor, I never know whether or not you're gonna allow me to come up, Councilman Bowman, so I try to stay prepared at all times. The Master Plan Committee meeting was held this month, and one of the items on the agenda was the, for the first time, we elected a vice chair. And the vice chair, as you all know, the chair is Councilwoman Levette Fuller, and the vice chair is Commissioner Louis Johnson. So I think for the first time, we've solidified that committee to show solidarity and unity for planning in Cattle Parish. We're extremely proud of those decisions. We initiated the community planning process. We identified, if I'm remembering correctly, that we have ninety-four community organizations in the city of Shreveport. We have a planner named James Jamba that has started to develop criterias to reach out to each neighborhood association and assist with the development of the neighborhood associations and assist them in the development of the neighborhood community plans. We also are working diligently to reestablish the community... the CAC of community personnel that are involved in assisting us in reviewing the Master Plan, assisting us in doing the updates to the Master Plan and evaluating the effectiveness of the Master Plan. All of those things are coming together very rapidly. The next meeting of the Master Plan Committee will be August the ninth in the MPC conference room.
Okay. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Clark.
We should have all got an email from the Budget to Actual Financial Report, and now we have the following request to speak.
Mr. Versa Clark.
Geez, Sandy, I beat you up here. Versa Clark, seven six two six Tampa Way, seven eleven oh five, Mayor, Council. I'm rising to speak on the moratorium of payday loans, lenders, I should say. I am for putting not a temporary, but a permanent moratorium on those. Ten days ago, we had our City Grove Renaissance Festival, and one of the displays that we had was a picture of Pioneer Bank and First National Bank. And at one particular time, my family, when we first moved out into City Grove in nineteen sixty, both of those banks were in existence. Chase took over First National, and they eventually moved out of the one on West Shreveport, West Seventeenth, and then the one on East Seventeenth. When I asked them why, there was a reason that was no investment in the community. This is something that has happened over and over again in these minority communities. Sometimes sprawl is the answer for this. But at one particular time, City Grove was a very proud community. Seventeenth Street was our business district. We had grocery stores and Bells and Year Woods, all of those places. This was when it was a mixed community. But now it's become predominantly African-American community. It seems that those... there is no real interest. We would like to be able to talk to that credit union that was... had an interest in coming out there and helping us. We are in the process of redeveloping that particular community, and we need some financial institutions out there to help us out. Hopefully, when you guys put this on your agenda for next week, or next time you meet, that you would make a note of the fact that there were oppositions for having those payday loans, payday lenders come out into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Markeva Campbell.
Hello, Markeva Campbell, sixty-two sixty Greenwood Road. I just wanted to speak really quickly on yesterday. Yesterday is administrative meeting concerning the crossing guards. I had a meeting as well with Dr. Gori about a week or so ago, and we talked extensively about a number of things, and this was one of the things that we did talk about. I know that he will be meeting with Mayor Perkins in the future, but there were some points that he wanted to give today in reference to the meeting yesterday. First, he really does want to clear up that the discussion between, you know, who was contacted, I think we all kind of like want to bypass that because we're past that point, and we don't have three months anymore until it's time for school to start. School starts on August twelfth, which is a little less than two months to go, and crossing guards are usually placed in position way before then. So this is definitely something that we definitely want to get under control before the start of school. He wants to make a couple of points that the district has no authority or jurisdiction in city streets, and that the crossing guards are not simply utilized in regard to district schools, but also to our private and our charter schools as well. So not just our elementary and middle high schools, but also our private schools that utilize those crossing guards. Our SROs, our SLOs, our security officers are also stationed primarily or prominently on campus to be seen by parents and as well with our students to build that relationship with our students. Also, historically speaking, some of our biggest tips comes from students during before and after-school interactions. So if they were to cover crossing guard duties off the campus, they would not be on campus to build these relationships during critical times, and more importantly, could be off campus during a very important threat situation if one was to occur. Also, crossing guard stations are often located two to five blocks away from the schools, which that's pretty far if we're talking about security. So if we don't have crossing guards, SROs, SLOs, or even if we can't use some SPD officers to even maybe take the place of those crossing guards, we start talking about teachers and other staffing. We can't hold those people liable for what would take place beyond district property, whether that be on campus or on the school bus. So what we're hoping is that we can come to some sort of resolution that we can go back to revisit that conversation, because I think at the end of the day, none of us on August the twelfth would want anything to happen to any child, especially if it's in an area where there was a crossing guard previously. So if there's a way that we can just go back to revisit the conversation and find some sort of substitution for that.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Good afternoon, good evening. Am I supposed to speak now about ordinance eighty, or should I wait?
Yes, ma'am, you may. If you'll state your name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Omari Hosang, four hundred Jordan Street, and today I'm speaking about Resolution eighty. And just thinking about, in general, all of the tasks that are before the city, it makes me remember childhood when my mother would give me all these tasks, and many of them seemed impossible, but I had to get them done. And so ultimately, I had to overcome that fear or that feeling that I could not conquer an impossible task. And for our City Council, and our mayor, of course, we've elected you all to confront these difficult tasks that are before you, and you have public support so long as what's righteous and equitable is present. And so in regards to this ordinance, which basically revises the rules of procedure and changes the meeting to take place at four-thirty PM, I think any government body that seeks to make the governing process more equitable, more accessible, and more democratic is demonstrating that they truly seek transformation. And so as United Way has come before the council and presented, many of the folks who live in Shreveport and Cattle Parish are working, their asset limited, income constrained, but still employed. So they're trying to make a way, and so at three o'clock PM, they're still at work, trying to survive. And so I believe by shifting this time later, you make way for most of your... many of your constituents who are working poor to be able to come and take place of government proceedings. I think that Mayor Perkins' administration has done an excellent job in... and Keith Hansen, in making government proceedings more technologically accessible through the Facebook Live. But again, as Demetrius Norman and other activists have said, everyone doesn't have access to internet. So face-to-face interactions are still so invaluable, and by creating space for folks to actually make it to the meeting, you're ensuring that as well. And so if we seek union justice and confidence, as it says in our city seal, that means that the folks most impacted by the issues, that working poor, that one-hundred-and-forty-million that are in poverty, that fifty-two percent that are working poor, it's important that they have an opportunity to have access to this decision-making process that we call the City Council Meeting and Public Comment. Without it, surely justice cannot be achieved, as the last thirty days have shown us. That was as a part of our representative, representing us as citizens, and ensuring that what we would like to happen, happens. And so I support this ordinance. The only part that I don't support is barring comment during the administrative session, and possibly I don't have the proceedings clear, but as it stands now, I believe that anyone can come and make a comment of an agenda that is on... an item that's on the agenda. And so I think it should remain that way, but I do believe that the meeting should be at four-thirty, and maybe after we pass this, maybe five-thirty, because most folks working nine to five and need time to get to the meeting. So thank you so much for allowing me to address you all, and have a great day.
Mr. Ron LePoe.
Good afternoon. I want to mention, before I get into my main point here, that when I left yesterday, I was caught in the hall outside by a gentleman named Ben Riggs, who I had no idea who he was. And he asked me how the construction on Paramount Road was affecting my business, because he was familiar with what was going on with Harvey Clay. And I wanted to just let you know that I appreciated that and knew that was proud to see somebody caring that much to ask me that question. And I've made a suggestion, and then he came... he liked the idea. He came in here and got Khalil Furlong, brought him out there. I had the conversation with him, and they're already doing something about it. And I think that says a heck of a lot about your administration. So... And I learned a little bit yesterday. I didn't quite understand until Councilman Nicholson, you helped me understand, this elimination of the physical separation that is proposed. And I want to make clear to everybody here that this is not a small deal. It is not housekeeping. The... make no mistake about it, the effect of elimination of the physical separation clause would put hard liquor in every Walmart, Albertson's, Kroger, Brookers, Walgreens, CVS store, among others. These are stores where minors are allowed, and it would put these minors in... where they would be able to go buy these products all the time. It would give them the opportunity to shoplift these items. They do not have that opportunity now. The change would also... The change would also put some locally-owned liquor stores out of business. It would cost jobs in those stores and in some of the surviving stores who lost business. And those jobs would not be replaced in those grocery stores that picked up that business. So it would move business from locally-owned stores to those aforementioned chains that have corporate offices outside of Shreveport. It would also increase the policing that would be needed in all of these additional outlets at a time when budgets are tight and there's a priority to police violent crime. Just because our liquor laws in this city are different than other laws, than the laws in other cities, doesn't make ours wrong. Take Texas, for example. Liquor laws are different all over the country, by the way, in many areas and within many states. In Texas, grocery stores don't have liquor across the whole state. This would be a big mistake, and unfortunately, it would be an irreversible mistake. Don't be the city council that blindly created this mess under the auspices of housekeeping. If it's not broken, don't fix it.
Good evening or afternoon. My name is Aura Hart. I live at 6911 Bethany Street, Shreveport 71106. I am the president of Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association. Fortunately, I have four city councilmen. Yay. I'm here just to say thank you to the mayor, to the council people who showed up and helped us and did all of the things to make Cedar Grove Renaissance Festival a great event. And if you didn't show up, you missed a treat. Someone asked me if Councilwoman Fleury was there, and I had to say no. But at least I know that someone knew that you knew that we were having this great festival. Mr. Mayor, I have many pictures of you with children, and they love you, and I appreciate that so much. This is the beginning of the rebirthing of Cedar Grove, and I hope that you will all get on board and make this community, which is one of the larger communities, help to recreate a Shreveport that is not sprawling, that is taking blight and turning it into beauty, taking communities that don't have and turning them into communities that are desires to live in, because every city, every citizen desires and deserves the same effort. Thank you so much.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Gray.
Ms. Hart.
Excuse me. Yes, and thank you so much for the horses, the children, and all the horses. And not only that, we have senior citizens riding horses. Thank you.
Councilman Gray.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hart, I didn't get a chance to see you, but I was there.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Clark and some of the other folk will vouch for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I got to selfie with you.
Thank you.
I didn't get to stay long, but we at least got to talk for a while.
I didn't.
I had a good time visiting with you.
Yes, yes. It was wonderful, and I thank all of you. If you couldn't make it, I know you thought about us. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport 71101. For those who didn't hear, a baseball game and a pancake are alike. They depend on the batter. I couldn't wait to say that after Vera told that joke on Alice, Mayor Perkins. However, I'm really here to talk about rules. Wherever you go, whatever you do, wherever you live, there are rules, and they're for your own good. Rules are made for a very good purpose. If you break the rules, you might be asking for big trouble, which we don't need. This has been going on for the last few meetings, and a lot of hollering, yelling, and profanity use went on in the chambers that nobody was happy about. This went on at the council and myself because of Freddie. He was so disrespectful and disorderly and disruptive that the city council, he did this on purpose and just was very inappropriate and unacceptable. These kind of actions are not going to be tolerated. Now, he has done this before, and the people from my church at the Southwest Hub and Bus Terminal said that they had seen this on television. They did not like it. Everyone in the chambers was really scared, and I'm afraid that somebody could wind up getting hurt if this thing happens again. Now, it's not up to me. Of course, the people made the request that they feel like somewhere down the line, if this continues, he'd have to be removed from any further council meetings, and that's what was brought to my attention. I did not bring this up. The people brought it up, and that's what I wanted to bring up today about rules. I just couldn't wait to tell that little joke about what Alice, what was on Alice. And then when Mel told Vera to tell the Pope that joke, she said, "I don't speak Polish."
Ms. Chair.
Councilman Gray.
Yeah. Ms. Chair, I'd like to just say to Sammy and to those of you that's present today that a couple of weeks ago, I talked to Freddie. In fact, I invited him to the church, and we prayed. And prayer changes conditions. He was scheduled to be baptized, and he was also scheduled to come here and apologize, because after you meet Jesus, then when other folk talking, then you won't make sly remarks, you won't, you know, downgrade people. You'll just listen. And so I took it upon myself to have Tabitha Taylor to contact Freddie. And he agreed to meet with me. We came to the church. We prayed. I told him right from wrong. He knew right from wrong. But I felt obligated as a Christian that I had to do something. It's easy for us to see a person doing this, that, and the other, and you never know what people are whenever they are out, versus whatever they do. You never know. But I took it upon myself, from the spirit of the Lord, to talk to him. He admitted he was wrong. He was willing to come to this council. I told him because it was a public act that he could not apologize in private. And a lot of times when we, in places, we do things publicly, and then we'll run and try to apologize in private. But if it's a public act, then we owe the general public an apology. And I had you in mind. You came to me, and I did what I knew was right as a Christian. And so he agreed to be baptized. We prayed. He laid before the Lord. Ms. Chairman, would you ask her to be quiet while I'm talking?
Yes.
Because it's interfering with the mic. And so, here again, and it's kind of like this, Sammy. Some people feel that they can speak out, but others can't. Some people feel that other folk ought to respect, but they don't. But I want to say to you that you touched my heart when you called me on the phone. I didn't just stand idly by. I prayed about it. I called Tabitha Taylor. She inboxed Freddie, and he agreed to meet at my church. He caught a ride with somebody to come, and we prayed for about two to three hours. And he came to service on that following Sunday. And he accepted Jesus as to becoming baptized again. And so I just wanted you to know that, I wanted this body to know that, that whenever he's in a position, that he will apologize, because it's just right to do it. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you.
John Settle, Fort Tillwood. I was glad to see you, Honor Chief Dice. I've known her for quite a while. It only took about two hours for them to unload her office. I was down here one day, and I almost got run over by a truck as they were unloading her office. On the crossing guards, I know there'll be discussion probably in two weeks. I really think it's appropriate you hear from Dr. Gory or administrator, not from a teacher at the charter school pitching Dr. Gory's position. I think that's just not appropriate. I almost missed a committee meeting today, and because I looked at it, and it looked pretty sanguine, nothing to happen. Going to talk about a red light that's much needed on Wallace Lake and Southern Loop, and also on Knight Street. And it had on there the standard new business and old business. But I decided to come. And I was real disappointed, because in a meeting that lasted 95 minutes, 55 minutes of that time was spent on two major items that everybody knew about. The administration knew about it. The chairperson knew about it. They were not on the agenda. One was a sales pitch by a vendor to sell a product to the city of Shreveport. The other one was to pitch an amendment for the general fund. I just don't think that's the spirit of transparency that y'all have talked about forever. I don't know if it's a violation of public records law, public meetings law, I'll check. I don't know if it's a violation of your rules. But goodness, guys, when you know you're going to have some major substantive topics to talk about at a committee, both the administration and the person, can't you put that on the agenda? You want the public to participate, and it wasn't even there. It wasn't even there. And then you have handouts that you just provided to the committee and not to some of us who are of interest. All I've heard this year is about the People's House and transparency. Today's committee meeting was a real disappointment, because your agenda didn't have on there the major items. The committee spent 55 minutes out of 95 on two items that weren't on the agenda. Y'all can do better than that. I'm real disappointed, because you've been transparent. I just happened to come by happenstance. I'm glad I did. Perhaps Councilman Bradford would have been there if he had known what was really happening. Maybe more of the public could be there. Y'all need to change your rules on items you know about. Thank you.
Josh Lyon, 1320 Pennock Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee. Public safety has been a popular topic of discussion for the last few weeks, and for good reason. I'm proud of this council in my hometown for repealing the unconstitutional ordinance against sagging pants. Thank you. I believe that this is a victory for the First and the Fourth Amendment, and must be just the beginning of an overdue audit of law enforcement in Shreveport. If this law was passed and subsequently used to skirt freedoms that guaranteed by the Bill of Rights, the next step should be to examine where other abuses may occur. Another law that has been used in this way is public drunkenness or public intoxication. Currently, the law is written so that probable cause can be established solely at an officer's discretion. This means that there's no evidence required for an arrest or conviction, only officer testimony. If someone is driving a motor vehicle, law enforcement must conduct a breathalyzer or blood test to prove someone is intoxicated. No such tests are required for public intoxication. These laws, vaguely written, have been used to intimidate and punish citizens or to make at least one thing stick in a string of charges if nothing else does. SPD officers know this, and they exploit it. I know this, because on the night of New Year's Eve just over six months ago, my brother and I had a negative encounter with an SPD officer as we walked down Marcus Street. I was approached by one of the officers, because he didn't like something that I said as we passed the traffic stop. After following us nearly 200 feet from the side of the stop, the officer continued to accost me. We reached the intersection and could go no further, and we found ourselves surrounded by five officers. When attempting to get back on the sidewalk after being backed into an active intersection, I was grabbed, thrown to the pavement, beaten, tasered, and arrested. Though the entire encounter lasted less than 180 seconds, the written accounts by the five officers differ. Important details were omitted, and orders of events don't match. I was charged with public drunkenness. The sole evidence that will be used to determine my guilt will ultimately be the sworn account of an officer who didn't appreciate what I had to say. The car that ran the red light for the traffic stop was let off with a warning. These tactics have not solved the crime problem in Shreveport and have garnered national and international news for a decade. It is common knowledge that discretionary use of laws and violent encounters with police occur more often in areas of poverty and disproportionately target non-white communities, but I feel compelled to do my part and tell my story. It is at this time that you must seize the opportunity with this council to make a change. Review the training and procedures that have led to systemic disregard of constitutional rights and continuous escalation with the intent of arrest. It is disconcerting that the city allows SPD to investigate itself in these matters, as it did in my case. In Nashville, we have a citizens review board. Maybe if Shreveport had one, the review of my encounter would have been different.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Your time is expired.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren Anderson, 247 East Listert Street, Shreveport 71101. I had to run out for a minute. I'm sorry I missed what he just spoke about. I guess I'll watch it later on the replay. I just had some questions today. Number one, whenever we have an issue with a dangerous intersection or a dangerous roadway and the way it's designed in particular, like where do we go to address that? And then how do we work towards redesign? I don't know if y'all can give me an answer now or later.
Traffic engineering under Public Works.
Okay, with Patrick?
No. Public Works is Gary Norman is the director.
Gary Norman? Where's he at?
Gary Norman's not here. If you can give me that information, then I can share that with him.
Okay, Gary Norman with Public Works?
Right.
All right. Because there are numerous dangerous intersections around town.
Is it a state highway intersection or city?
Well, I mean, just like one example in my neighborhood at Yuri and Herndon, East Herndon, it's just, it's a blind, another blind driveway pulling out. There's obstructions. It's a bus stop, so there's a trash can there, which now obstruction of view. I complained about this years ago. Nobody ever listened. I left Shreveport because I was fed up. I come back.
You must have been about 10 years old. You're not that old.
I'm a little. I got some age. But I came back, and now unfortunately, there's a memorial there now, like somebody died there, like because people aren't listening about poor design, and I'm trying to bring it to everybody's attention. It's a serious issue. I didn't mean to get so serious so quickly. And yesterday, the meeting, I don't know if I heard right, but it sounded like Shreveport PD said that there is a law on the books which allows police officers to go into a business with cameras and watch their video footage without any probable cause, without a warrant, without a subpoena, without any due process. Did I hear that right?
I heard that it's like an armed robbery or something like that.
Okay.
That's what I heard. I didn't hear what you heard.
So if there's an armed robbery.
There had to be probable cause.
Okay, so it was established probable cause?
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, I'd still like to see the statute.
I can stand corrected on that, but that's what I thought I heard.
Okay, I mean, I know for certain there are many like unconstitutional, illegal statutes, rules, laws on the books that are enforced regularly just because people don't know. And my third question is who, who is responsible for training the Shreveport PD and our police officers in constitutional law, basically? In most jurisdictions, there will be like lawyers, judges, professors who train the police officers in constitutional law, because, believe it or not, good police work actually does make our streets safer, and good police work consists of not violating people's constitutional rights so that, I know my time's over anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Chairman. Chief Raymond. Aren't y'all, aren't y'all taught by district judges or federal judges constitutional law Aren't y'all, aren't y'all taught by district judges or federal judges constitutional law every year?
We are. We have several courses. One is taught by Edward Young, which is nationally recognized, former FBI agent and attorney for FBI. He comes and teaches a week long to all our cadets. We also have several attorneys, district attorney's office, county DA's office that come and teach some of those courses.
Do you know any of their names?
Sure, Ed Bluer.
Then judge, you then judge.
Various judges teach depending on what the specific course is.
Excuse me, if I can interject. Any DAs that come from the DA's office to make, to do training, whether it's for the SPD or for the sheriff's office, that's done at the discretion of the DA. So who may do it during one course or one class session or cadet session may be somebody totally different from the other one. So if you wanted to know specifically who and when, you'd have to contact the DA's office. So the DA is in charge of training. No, he's not in charge. He assists with the training. His office is. He chooses the instructors.
We have to keep going, so if she has some more questions, she can, let me talk to her to the side, please. Thank you.
Mr. Cedric Murphy.
Cedric Murphy, 27th Park Department. Mayor Perkins, Chairman Bowman-Nicholson, and then Councilman Fuller. Hi, I'm going to talk about and thank you guys for repealing the ordinance on sagging, but there is another police discretion ordinance. It's called 90-462 for walking on roadways, and I'm asking if somebody could look into that. A situation, I mentioned this before, coming down the street, sidewalk was inaccessible. Police officer made a U-turn, pulled me over basically in my chair. I can't remember the first thing he said, but the second thing he said was the items that I was carrying, did I steal them? I'm in a wheelchair, but verbally I can get my point across. By the time the incident had ended, there were five police officers there. My concern is that they're using that with, uh, police discretion and this, um, 90-462 gives them the right to stop a pedestrian walking in the street. Lakeside, Allendale, a lot of the predominantly black neighborhoods don't have sidewalks, but they're using this and can be used as another discretionary item to stop, detain, ask questions. Violence can happen. Like I said, when the police officer asked me if the items I was carrying was stolen, you guys have no idea, you have no idea how hurtful that was because I'm in a wheelchair and how upsetting that was because it was a police officer and where were my rights? So I'm asking you guys to please look into 90-462. It gives a police officer the discretion if someone is walking in the street to stop, detain, ask questions. And in most cases, this will be coming to a situation where it can be volatile. One gentleman was standing in the streets. Police officer stopped him because he was standing in the streets. The situation became very aggressive. The young man somewhat got hurt and violence started. So I'm telling you guys, please, it's 90-462 walking. It is against the law to walk in the streets in Shreveport. Chief Raymond told me about the clause that stated that if it's inaccessible and so on and so on, but this is going to be another item I'm just giving you guys for a warning that police officers are going to use to detain young black men in some areas. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a quick comment to Mr. Murphy. Myself and Chief Raymond have already been reviewing this ordinance and looking at possible repealing. We've been looking at it for about two weeks now along with some other ones. We, I mean, you know, obviously the sagging pants ordinance initiated a bit of a review between me and him, so we, we're trying to do a holistic assessment and then repeal after that. So we've, we're on it and we'll be updating.
You're simply amazing, Mayor. Simply amazing. Councilwoman Fuller.
Oh, you're.
Mr. Murphy, I'll just make the comment that this is a law that I'm sorry to confess I violate every time I take a walk in my neighborhood and I have done that my entire life and I have never been questioned by a police officer walking the road. So I hear what you're saying and I'm very sympathetic to your suggestion.
Actually.
They did a, uh, a Shreveport time to the study, I don't know what time it's at, and 90% of the tickets are issued to blackmailers. 90%. So thanks, Mayor.
Ms. Candace Amadon.
Candace Amadon, 1939, Southern Loop, Shreveport, 71106. Didn't expect to speak today, so a little nervous, but that's all right. I'm speaking on behalf of the separation law. We are a new business that just opened, uh, quarks and cuts out on Southern Loop. Our business model originally was quarks and cuts. The cuts was going to be cuts of steak. I originally worked for Glazier and then I worked for Cisco, so for that community, for a one-stop shop, it was just a great idea. Little did I know, I cannot sell high alcohol and steaks under the same roof with the same entrance. So, um, when I was going for my license, of course, I was denied and I had to choose between liquor store or, you know, low alcohol and cuts of meat. As most of you know, even craft beer has 6%, over 6% alcohol. So that was kind of out of the, the realm of what I needed to do to be financially successful, I mean, for the whole, uh, community. So, um, just to address on the grocery stores in Shreveport, um, I, I really only can think of one grocery store that does not have alcohol at the time. I know in other areas, and we are the only city in the state of Louisiana, and they don't have the problems in Bossier, they do have the high alcohol. For the most part, they have it sectioned off. They might have a cash register right there and/or you just, you have to be ID. But they also have, everyone that works there has to have an ABO card. RV for the state, which is, you know, for, for an ABO, of course, you really don't learn of the laws of, of serving alcohol, but for the RV you do, and I know those go hand in hand. So at the end of the day, it really will help the city because as you most know, it's $50 for an ABO card, but it's also teaching people. You, you have the education of how to sell alcohol in the right way and who to sell it to. So for the grocery stores, I really don't see how it would affect local businesses because of the fact that it, most of them have it anyway, so it's not affecting them now. But from a small business standpoint and from what I'm doing and I feel like others would do, um, you know, I, I think the separation law repealing that and maybe rewriting it in a different way would be great. For me right now, yes, I opened this past weekend and I cannot tell you how many people I turned around because they could not get a fresh cut steak. It's not for a competition for anything else, it's just for the convenience of our community. You, like you said yesterday, glass, you want a bottle of wine with your steak, yeah, you have to go in two separate places. Half the time, when I go in a grocery store, I do have my child with me, but mine will be no one under 21. So there is regulations. I don't think there's any more for security on that as long as everybody's got ABO and RV cards, so. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Ms. Amadon, I understand why you want this changed. I assume you wouldn't oppose a modification to the proposed ordinance that prohibited persons under 21 from being in, being in an area where alcohol is sold. You don't want people under age coming in to buy in an area where alcohol is sold. That's not an issue for you?
No, sir. That's not an issue whatsoever. I, I prefer no one under 21 being.
I understand.
Protect myself. But in a grocery store, if they have it sectioned off is where my point is, is they usually have it sectioned off to where people under 21 can't go in there.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Ken Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ken Craft, 157 Archer, Shreveport, 71105. Mr. Chairman, Councilman Mayor, uh, I'm going to start and be a little bit, few different things, but I really want to start with my main focus. Y'all done a great job with Ordinance 70. We've had citizens committees. Mayor Glover did it in the fourth year of his first term. Prior mayor didn't do it, even though she said she would at the BNA forum. Absolutely, absolutely. In answer to question number four, you've done it in less than six months and it's moving along. And the only thing about that committee, possibly for special projects, let's get serious about working with the MLK Foundation in Atlanta who gives huge grants. And let's take old Galilee Baptist and honor Dr. King. Someday I want to go there when it's open and dedicated and recite "I Have a Dream" at that new museum in five, 10 years, if God willing, I'm still around. And I want to offer to any group that wants me to recite at the festival in Cedar Grove next year at the, I'd love to do it, no fee. Takes 11 minutes, 17 or 16 words. I've done it for Huntington, for schools, for the teachers. I love doing it. Anybody wants me to do the declaration, contact me. I'll have my schedule out Sunday night, never a fee. The Constitution, 42 minutes, no, probably not interested, but I'll do that for you too. Now, a couple comments on previous speakers and thank you, Mr. Nicholson, for allowing me to go later because I always pick up things. And the 4:30 start is great, but just remember jeopardy starts at 4:30, so y'all might be in jeopardy. But, uh, about the school crossing guards, when I did the Public Works budget in '80 and '81, 50/50. School board 50%, city 50%. Don't know when it changed, don't know why. It might have not been legal then, but it was strictly 50/50. And now it's almost all ours and the board pays very little. Couple more things. The timing on the vote on the bond, the infrastructure gap, and John Settle had two good points. I was disappointed that so much time was devoted to items not on the printed agenda. I know we can do better than that, maybe put it off next meeting, but I like your timing, March 5th today, every three months I think is about appropriate. What I'm trying to avoid is 16 months under prior administration without any infrastructure committee and then meeting four times in five months, which was like too much the other way. Finally, I want to honor Thelma James, now in Memphis and assisted living, born 100 years ago today, longtime resident of Shreveport, Broadmoor neighborhood, Broadmoor Presbyterian Church, a fine lady. And I used to tease her, "How do you remember my birthday, Ken? Well, it's the same as Custer's defeat at the Little Big Horn."
Mr. Chairman, there are no further requests of speaking.
There are no executive appointments to be considered today and there are no items on the consent agenda for introduction. Mr. Thompson, please proceed with consent items to be adopted.
We have one Resolution 75 authorizes Montrose Investments LLC, represented by Mr. Fertitta at 300 East Florida Lucas Road, to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and sewer system.
So moved.
Second. Removed by Councilman Butcher and second by Councilman Bradford. There's no discussion, please vote.
Agenda legislation resolutions on second reading and final passage, which only require one reading. Resolution 71 has been adopted. Resolution 73 authorizes the submission of the 2019, 2023 Consolidated Strategy Plan and the 2019 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Butcher. There's no discussion, please vote. Councilwoman Fuller. Push, you're in Flair, though.
I did.
Flair, Flair.
I voted.
She did it twice.
It's lit up.
Working. Push again. There we go. Motion, Kevin, seven.
Uh, Resolution 74 authorize an accept, an acceptance of active donation between the city and the Shreveport Development Corporation, um, for the water and sewer system mains and related facilities for Maghriqna Woods, Unit 2 and 12 Oaks.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Flair. There's no discussion, please vote.
Uh, Resolution 76 recognizes Shreveport City, Will Junior for establishing the Shreveport City Marshal Office Law Enforcement Training Center.
So moved.
Second.
Removed by Councilman Bowman and second by Councilman Butcher. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion, Kevin.
Uh, Resolution 77 dedicates Kenneth Avenue at Dunlap Street in honor of Reverend Richard Harley Junior for his commitment and contributions to the Lakeside-Allendale community and the city of Shreveport and to otherwise provide with respect.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green. If there are no discussions, please vote.
Resolution 78 declares certain city property.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Councilman Butcher and second by Councilman Green. Number 78, if there's no discussion, please vote.
Did you vote no?
Thompson.
Resolution 79 objects to the acceptance of outside explosive and industrial waste for disposal at Camp Mendon at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman, Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Bradford.
Chairman, let me, let me say, and, and I think this is going to relate to '80 when it come up again. I, I think this year, this council year, I have never gotten as many emails on this subject than we have any previous emails. Is, is everybody in agreement with that, basically, in, in the opposition to this explosive being, 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 being voluntary community? And I'm, and I'm just saying that the communication that we get on, and items that, 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 that people feel very, uh, suspicious about or anxious that they feel irrelevant to them, they have no, they have, they have, they have no, no, uh, problem contacting us. They have no problem contacting us. I mean, I mean, I, I do, most of my, and this council office can confirm, uh, communication with my constituents through, through, through means that, uh, that would, that would require, that can require immediate response. Some of the items that we even heard this morning, this afternoon, if they would have been related to Councilman prior to this meeting, we could have had those items directly included. So I'm just saying that we have, we have venues of which we, our constituents communicate with us, and this is a prime example of how that happens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There's no other discussion, please vote.
Uh, Resolution 80, amend section 1.1 of this rules of procedure of the city relative to the time of city council meetings.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Nicholson. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have asked for this item to be added to the agenda, but the conversation yesterday made clear that we have, at, at, at the least, a minority of the council that is very concerned about the idea of departing from 40 years of tradition in holding our meetings at 3:00 PM. I'm not opposed to the idea. I think it's something that we should continue to talk about and to consider, but I don't have any desire to impose that change on, on my colleagues, Councilman Green and Councilman Bradford, any other member who may oppose it at this time. So my motion is to withdraw this, uh, resolution from the agenda.
A second.
Removed by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Bradford to remove.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman, I really appreciate it, and my concern is basically twofold. Our staff, along with the mayor's staff, most of them get here about 7:30 in the morning time, and for them to have to stay here until whatever time at night without any pay at it, I think it would be very unfair for them. But I really. But I really appreciate you, you know, finding in your heart to remove it at this time. And I'm open for discussion. And I really believe that if we get our budget right, that we could have the finance in place to say to them, okay, this is what we have available and this is what we'd like to do, then we could move forward. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chairman, let me also express to the gentleman, my appreciation because you heard us, you heard some concerns yesterday. My concern was certainly different from the Councilman Green's concern. My opposition was, I have, I put them down, MLK CDC, MLK Neighborhood Association, North Lake Wood Neighborhood Association, Lakeside Neighborhood Association, Ellendale Neighborhood Association, Cherokee Park Neighborhood Association, Stone Lake Neighborhood Association. And I have, I have quarterly district meetings. I meet with my constituents on an average of two neighborhood associations a month, plus my quarterly meetings. Meeting with my constituents in the neighborhood is more effective than them coming to the city council meeting. Meeting with my constituents on an as-needed basis also is more effective. I don't at all disagree with the ability of our constituents to come to this body. It's their house. Just like what happened this morning with Councilman Green. He invited, he invited Mr. Gillum to come to the council meeting and allowed Mr. Gillum whatever time he's, he needed to make his expressions. We all have that same privilege. But I think that, 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 to hear items that are not relevant to this body. Even last month, the mayor invited him to one of our meetings at Cherokee Park. On the same day, and that's what happens usually, I seen the mayor leave here early because he said, "I got a meeting in the neighborhood at 6:00." Most of our meetings, we meet with neighborhoods sometime at 6:00. And if we extend that time, then we will lose out on that ability to meet with our neighbors. And mayor made it there because I left a little early, but I'm saying that it would impede that, that also. So, Councilman Nicholson, I appreciate you hearing us. And I'm just saying, if you don't have regular meetings with your people in the neighborhoods where the majority could come and engage the council people for that area, I would ask that you do so. So, the conversation continued, but I appreciate your withdrawing this item.
Thank you, Councilman.
Please vote. Carries six to one.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under introduction of resolutions. Resolution 80, Mayor to hand into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Freeport and participating high schools through their governing bodies relative to the battle of the border, battle on the border, 2019 High School Football Showcase, and the use of city personnel, property and equipment and to otherwise provide with respect there too. And Resolution 80 to which authorizes the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Kato Parish Sheriff's Office to jointly purchase, own and maintain the public safety logging recorder system.
Move for introduction. Second.
Removed by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Nicholson to introduce these resolutions.
We're now to introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to July the 9th. Ordinance 75 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 76 amends the 2019 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 77 amends section 10-186 of the code. And ordinance 78 amends section 26-220, an affidavit attesting that city contracts was not secured through the employment of payment of a solicitor to chapter 26 Finance Article 6 Contracts Division 1, generally of the City of Freeport Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 79 authorizes mayor to execute lease agreement with the United States Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife Service to manage, operate and use C. Beckham Dixon Park to provide services to the public. Ordinance 80 amends section 10-84 of the, of chapter 10 of the code relative to physical separation of sales of high alcohol content liquor for consumption off the premises. Ordinance 81 amends various articles and sections of the City of Freeport Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance 82 is assigning matter C-24-19. It rezones property located on the southwest corner of East 70th Street and East Bert Coons Industrial Loop from R. 17 Single Family Residential District to C. 2 Corridor Commercial District.
Move for introduction, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green.
We're now to ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 58 rescinds ordinance 33 of 2009, ordinance 54 of 2011, and ordinance 136 of 2013, and removes vehicular flow restrictions on Baker Street, Fannin Street and North Street in section 37 Township 18 North Range 14 West.
Number 58.
Are you comfortable, Council lady?
Not really. I, I have some concerns for the project, but I don't know that those, that, that this step needs to be impeded by my concerns. I don't think that this will stop me from being able to talk to community development about the rest of it. So, all right, so moved.
Second.
Can we have, you want to have more discussion about it?
No, 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 I was just wondering, did you want to postpone it for any other time?
I mean, do you all need to postpone it any further?
No.
Then we can continue. Let's go.
All right.
Give me one second.
Second.
Mayor's at 20. Move, Mr. Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Second? She wouldn't say a second. She would say, "Let's move it along."
If there's no discussion, please vote.
Did not pass, and we did not do this, then we're going to get fined by not having this work done. I think it was, what, 100 and some?
108 million.
100. How much we would get fined?
Oh, how much a day?
You're talking about the penalties for, the consent decree. Penalties could range anywhere from 500 to upwards to $1,500 a day.
And, Councilman Green, I appreciate and recognize that concern. As I indicated yesterday, I applaud the mayor for taking prompt action to replace our consent decree management firm. That was a correct decision, in my view, based on the information that I have received in the past six months. I further agree with and approve his decision to select Burns &amp; McDonald. That is a, a, an international firm of high reputation that I hope will be able to improve our consent decree management. But the fact remains that serious concerns have been raised about the management of work which has involved thus far the expenditure of $400 million and which will require us to spend an additional $800 million based on the estimates we have received. My no vote today does not indicate that, I do not anticipate the councils approving these amounts. And perhaps that will happen soon. But before we authorize the expenditure of $108 million, I believe we have to receive assurances greater than we have thus far that we have improved the process for managing this, which is the largest expenditure of capital funds in the history of the city. And that is the reason for my no vote today. I look forward to engaging the administration over the next two weeks about where the consent decree revision process is, perhaps where the contract negotiation with Burns &amp; McDonald is. And after we've had those discussions, we can revisit this expenditure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Council.
I got the C.A.O.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Council.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up, just to let you all know that we have invited Burns &amp; McDonald to the council meeting. We've asked for them to come at the next meeting, so we'll update you to let you know if they are available. Because we do want to be able to address you all's concerns and for you all to be able to ask them questions. We also have a meeting scheduled with them and council this week to talk through those details so that we can gain some more information. Because we do want to make sure that going forward also the council is involved with this process.
Mayor, how quick will you be able to get those contracts signed with them? That, that, that depends. I'm ready to vote, but I don't want to vote this until I know you got the contract signed with them. That's the reason I'm a no vote today.
City Attorney. Attorney Creel, can we, can we give an answer to Councilman Flury on how soon we'll have the contract signed?
Sure. I can't give you a specific date, but I can tell you that I spent the last several days and more recently today for about an hour and a half on the phone with counsel from Burns &amp; McDonald and our outside counsel working through the contract. We plan to touch base again on Friday with our mutual revisions and have another conference call on next week to tighten things up. So, I can't give you a definite date, but I can tell you that it's in the very near future.
I'm not confident today voting for money until we get those contracts signed. And I think it's urgent that we get those signed, then we'll approve this money. But it doesn't look like, it appears to me, in my opinion, that this would be putting the horse before the cart. And as quickly as you can get those done, it should be an urgent matter.
Yes, sir, it is urgent, but I want to make sure it's done right. So we're just making sure that we're going through it piece by piece and addressing each side's concerns.
Yeah, and Councilman Flury, we appreciate your concern. We've been, she, I mean, they've been completely dedicated to this over the last couple of days, but we've been working on this for weeks now to make sure that we get it right. So we're going to be as diligent as possible and, and like I said, we are concerned.
About the next council meeting, maybe?
Yes.
That's a possibility. It is a possibility. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to commit to a date and then come back and say, "I need more time."
We want to invest in it.
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're, we're going to shoot for, before the next council meeting.
Okay.
Right, Councilman Green. Bradford.
I, I, since, we'll just, I'll just save my comments for later. Thank you.
Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, my first inquiry was going to be point of order in the fact that the vote was, the vote was tied. And I was trying to inquire about attorney, was there, within, within the rules of the council, that this could be reconsidered? And I think the clerk said that he didn't think so. So, and the only reason I'm, I'm bringing this up, and I think yesterday we debated this very fully and broadly. And the impression was that we did not need to delay in this process. Now, I didn't, I didn't believe that passing this ordinance would authorize expenditure funds. I thought it was to make the funds available in and when, in and when the contract was signed. I think all of us understand checks and balances, responsibilities. We all are part of this body, but the mayor administration have responsibilities, the council have responsibilities. And I don't want, I don't want to get into administrating. We legislators, administrators, legislators, they sound different. And when we pass ordinance and resolutions, we expect that they be administered professionally and with the intent of the legislation at hand, that, that it would not deter from what we had legislated. And, and if that doesn't happen, then responsibility and accountability would be, would fall on the administrators. So I, I, I guess I'm sort of, I'm sort of, I'm sort of complex that we, we must feel that, that some, some contracts or some money would be expended without, without the proper authorization versus making sure that the money is available and when and if the, the contracts are signed, that that contract be executed without delay. So, if the feeling of the, of the council is that the two weeks won't delay, Mayor, the two weeks won't impede what we're trying to do, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Councilman, but, but there is a concern. As I, as I pointed out yesterday, Councilman Nicholson, you seem to allude to you needing more information about how we're, the apparatus in which my administration is putting in place to make sure that we're being diligent. And things that we've said on the record, because Councilman Butcher, you said some things aren't publicly available to you. There's a change in project manager. The engineering department has requested an additional member of the team to review and be specifically focused on consent decree work. We have actually had attorneys in the room this time when doing these negotiations, and that's the reason why it's taken a long time. And I can point to measure after measure after measure that we've put in place to make sure that the, that we're doing the due diligence to one of the largest bond projects that the City of Freeport has ever undergone. So I'm, I am cautious, Councilman Bradford, since you bring it up. To, this can't be, you know, in, if in two weeks we get to this point again and there's a vote and there's a request for more information, I don't know what else I can provide to get over that hurdle. So, you know, Councilman, Councilman Flury is man of his word. So if, you know, it's a matter of us having the contract signed, then we'll be fine. But if there's any other request for information or additional, additional due diligence required on our part, then it could very well harm the city.
Thank you, Mayor, for those clarifications. And I think, again, that the, the rules are the rules. And if you, you are in a position in two weeks to have the proper documents, this council would be comfortable, and I think we can move forward. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Bowman. Ms. Chair, thank you very much. From the discussion that I heard on yesterday, it seemed to go to me, Mr. Mayor, that your administration, you and your administration is being punished, in a sense, for something that some contractors said happened in the previous administration. And I really think that's very unfair. As you've said to us, you put everything in place, you've been upfront to do whatever. And, you know, the reason I was ready to vote today is because, like I said, I feel that if those contractors who talk to the colleagues up here, if it's that they want to be, want to have a seat at the table, then I just think that they ought to say, "We want to have a seat at the table" and not postpone the work because it's the largest deal the city ever have or may ever have. I don't think y'all ought to get punished. But from where I sit, I say you ought to get punished because of something somebody said about what happened in the previous administration, that you all got to go back over the books and find out if they double deal the work. And I don't think that's fair to you all, but I just, I'm in hopes that we won't delay this next time. That whoever have folk that want to be at the table, because I have a motto at church that says, it's either you at the table. motto at church that says, it's either you at the table or you on the menu. So, therefore, if we can all get whoever to come to the table and just state that I want to be a part of this, and just make sure my company get in and make sure whoever come, I just think that that's how we ought to do business, instead of punishing you all for something you are not guilty of at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bush.
In light of Councilman Fleury's words wanting to wait two weeks, I honestly don't see a big deal in waiting two weeks. I don't want to see it go over two weeks, because I think unless we have a good conversation with the EPA giving us permission to do that. I do, however, want to reiterate what I said yesterday. I believe that the mismanagement or the issues that have happened in consent decree, even if it was outside of the city's scope or control, and it was the project manager, I do want to see us go back in and look at this, and I don't know who the correct person is to do that. But if there was something that was done incorrectly, those parties need to be held accountable. As far as the mayor, I agree 100% with what Councilman Green's saying. This happened in a previous administration. I said this to my colleagues yesterday and to the public yesterday. I, on the surface, see absolutely nothing more than the mayor can do right now to remedy these problems. And I mean that when I say that. I said that to you yesterday. But as an elected official, I also want to make sure that we have some safeguards in place, that we're not paying double for something that we're getting. So, I'm kind of conflicted about where we are right now. I'm good with waiting two weeks, but after that, I think we need to move forward, because I sure don't want to be any hot water with the EPA. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I got.
I'm sorry.
Are you going back toward something to him, or?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that the issue is not these contractors and what you said yesterday, it's doing the paperwork. That's what we're talking, that's all we're, you don't, even though it's been said we're not going to spend the money, you got to have the contract signed. Once you sign them, it's full steam ahead. But look, that's just good business. A notary, I don't have juris doctrine behind my name, but I do know that you have to have the contract signed. That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to punish the mayor. I love the mayor, but I just want all the Ts crossed and Is dotted. That's the way we do it, did it in Homer. Always took care of a business. We didn't go to the bank, get no money till we sign the note. And that's all I'm saying here. We got the money, but we're gonna get the paperwork right. Does it make sense? I think so.
Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say to conclude my remarks concerning this vote, that I did not vote no on the previous ordinance, nor will I ever vote no to punish the mayor or to do anything other than to discharge the oath that I took when we all got on the podium last December. Councilman Bradford, of course, is correct that there is a division between administrative and legislative responsibilities, between the executive and the legislature, which the city of Shreveport is the city council. But appropriating funds is squarely within the scope of our responsibility and our duty. This concerns whether to expend more than $100 million. And just last week, persons that I found credible, including a prime contractor who has done tens of millions of dollars of work for the city of Shreveport on this consent decree program, indicated to me that he had very serious concerns about the processes in place now, but implemented before Mayor Perkins took office. And so, not processes he chose, but nonetheless, the processes in place now were inadequate. I have to take that seriously. That's what my constituents elected me to do. And every time I sit down in this seat, I'm gonna vote in the manner that I believe is in the city's interest. I fully expect all my colleagues to do the same, and I have, know that the mayor also will act in the city's interest as he proceeds it. We will not always agree. We may have one view, and he may have another. I may have one view, and everybody up here may disagree with me. But I will always vote in a manner consistent with what I perceive to be the city's interests. And that is, that will, there will never be any other motivation for a vote I take up here. Thank you.
And I missed the vote, so.
All that middle and that.
Kind of like at church. Can I push the button now and vote? The train have left the station.
Well, Councilman Bradford taught a good rule in parliamentary procedure. He taught me a long time ago, you have to be in the majority to be able to call for it to be placed back on the table. But since we had a tie vote, I suppose that the parliamentarian would say that we cannot move forward.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
That is correct, sir. I call for order of the day.
Moving on.
Ordinance 73, that amends the capital improvements budget for Sportran. I understand that there are some technical questions, and possibly this is going to be postponed.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
I spoke this afternoon briefly with Mr. Washington. I fully support the intent of this ordinance, but he pointed out to me some technical corrections that need to be made to the language. And so, for that reason, I will move to postpone this two weeks.
Set. The motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Green to postpone. If there's any discussion, if there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
I believe that ordinance 74 is a companion.
Likewise, moved to postpone.
Move by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Green to postpone.
Was all of the items on the regular agenda? I'm not aware of any item to be removed from the table agenda. Appeals that we have for today?
All right, no proper standards, no ABOs, and no other appeals. Are there any reports from Officer Bois or committee? No?
Mr. Chairman, let me confer with the attorney briefly. Now, we, the document that we pulled two weeks ago regarding the downtown airport in the River Waterway, I'm asking that Councilman, it was referred back to my committee on Maxine at Council. Fleury, can you meet with us on Tuesday at 10:30 at the attorney's office?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a clerk's report, Mr. Thompson?
No, the only thing, Mr. Chairman, is there's an executive session, City of Shreveport versus Century Tail Solutions LLC, that will come up later in the agenda.
And we did have, did have one person who did not speak again, we did not get the communication before the clerks came down. It was sent in, I checked, it was sent in at 3:01, Marvin Mohammed.
You need a motion?
Just let him speak for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marvin Mohammed, 2808, Hershey D. Wilson. I want to speak on a couple of items that we, that was addressed on yesterday, particularly that it was this council opinion that public comments are a privilege and not a right. It's state law, as we said yesterday. And if, when you look into the Louisiana Constitution, Section 12, Article 3, revised statute 42-11 through 28, it specifically addresses and gives the general public to write for direct contact with council. Also, it was suggested yesterday by this council that public comments should be stricken from the administrator meeting. Again, in doing so, would be against constitutional law. This council is obligated to advertise ordinance and resolutions that are to be voted on. The administrator meeting is that form of advertisement. I'm saddened that we have a lawyer in Councilman Nicholson, and, but yet, this goes over his head. I'm balfour at that. This council, and when I say this council, I mean a growing minority, meaning white folks, wishes to bamboozle this administration and bamboozle this city and hold the city hostage. It was first done and started by Councilman Nicholson by taking away the public comment session from the, from the, from the agenda, from the city charter, and then this council hides behind the charter that they amended five months ago. There was a continuation of that hijacking, because they see power leaving them by the introduction of ordinance number 27, which would handcuff or take power from the mayor from being able to sign off on contracts, procurement opportunities, I believe, under $100,000. And now this fiasco today. See, it was said that this council and this administration been in power now for six months. Well, the honeymoon is over. The day of reckoning is here. That's all you get is six months.
Mr. Bob, your time is expired, sir.
Really?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You must have started that when I was sitting, when I was sitting over there.
Time is up, though.
Can I get, can I get a motion for an additional minute and a second? Anybody?
If somebody would.
Sir?
If somebody would.
I'm moved to give him, how much you need, one minute?
Yes, sir.
I'm moved, Mr. Chairman, to give him another minute to finish up.
Thank you. We have to.
We need a second, we need a second before you can speak.
And a vote.
All I can do is make a motion, I can't say.
The minute that I'm standing here, I could have been done.
Do we have a second?
No.
Motion fails.
Does any other council member have any communication?
I didn't hear you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I was saying that any other council member have any communication?
Oh, so I don't, I don't get additional minutes?
The motion failed.
Sir?
The motion failed, the vote failed.
I see y'all in two weeks.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, as I've discussed with several members of the council and with the chief administrative officer, last week, the external auditor of the city advised us to expect an extensive number of deficiencies on the forthcoming audit for the city. I will say, for the benefit of the public, and in light of discussions that we've had today, that this audit is for the previous calendar year. This audit does not relate to the current administration. And so, with that caveat, I want to advise the public that the external auditor has identified what I consider to be inexplicable failures on behalf of the administration to conduct, the previous administration to conduct the business of the city efficiently and effectively. For example, I was advised that last year, the city of Shreveport incurred more than $300,000 in penalties for failing to timely file quarterly payroll tax returns with the Internal Revenue Service. Rather than request a reduction or waiver of the penalties as is common, the city simply paid them, at least so far as I know. This is an omission for which there can be no explanation. The external auditor also advised me that the city's banks, or one of the city's banks where $15 million were on deposit, were not complying with a state law that requires cash deposits to be collateralized with a pledge of securities. This is the way that the city is protected against the possibility of a bank failure, however small that possibility may be. The city, at least in 2018, did not have internal controls in place to ensure that this state law was followed. And so, as a consequence, we had exposure for this unsecured cash that we not, otherwise would not have had. And finally, the external auditor indicated that the city did not properly reconcile its operating and payroll accounts on an ongoing basis. The city of Shreveport cannot do the business of the citizens if its own financial house is in order. The external auditor's report will be issued this summer, and I'm confident that the current administration will do everything in its power to correct the deficiencies that report identifies. The public has a right to know how the city has fallen short in the past year, and I encourage members of the media and members of the public to carefully review the external auditor's report when it is available. Thank you.
All right. CIO Jones.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to follow up to let the council members know that I spent five hours Friday meeting with the city controller. After that, I spent another two hours meeting with the external auditor. So, these matters that you have mentioned, as well as the other ones that are in the findings, are a concern for us as well. We did receive some recommendations from the auditors. I've talked with the finance director as well. And we're going to be putting things in place to remedy, and some of them we have corrected already. Of course, as you all know, the audit is, you know, going to be available online, you know, it's a public document. But going forward, we will be addressing these issues and taking those steps to remedy the findings that are published.
Okay. Councilman Fleury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the audience here and those of you watching out by social media, I want to speak as the chairman of the audit committee. I also was privy to the information that Councilman Nicholson given, and I want the public to know that I have reached out very soon after I learned that with the administration, the mayor and his staff, and they are moving rapidly to make these corrections. I have confidence today that I can speak to my constituents and to the citizens of Shreveport, that all that is possible is being done. It is being done because the mayor has been made aware, and he is reaching out and moving personnel around. He has taken action, swift action, to remedy these problems that have come forth. And so, I want you to, as citizens of Shreveport, to be assured that we're, as council members, legislators, teaming and working in partnership with the administration, that we're going to correct these problems and move forward with the confidence that we will have good data and we will be well secured in our financial data. So, I just want to point that out. It does sound bad, it does sound discouraging, but action has already been made by the administration, and I see that we'll see good results in the next few days coming forth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Fleury. Mayor Perkins, any remarks?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
No additional communication? No additional communications, okay. All right, we have a request from the city attorney to go in executive session to discuss the city of Shreveport.
Mr. Chairman, motion to convene an executive session to consider the city of Shreveport versus Century Tail Solutions LLC et al., suit number 59161, 661, First Judicial District Court, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, would be in order.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Butch.